I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, if you will please bow your heads and during this season, please remember those who are continuing to serve while the rest of us get to celebrate Christmas and the New Years while they are serving, protecting and serving us. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, Ms. Jones, could you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, our Chairman Mallory, we have three adjustments. The first item is removal of administrative item eight point three. The second item is the public hearing, which is item seven point one. We will open that public hearing and see if anybody is here, but then we will close that without rendering decision because that item is not ready for board action. The final item is the addition of property acquisition under closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven A five.
Okay. Is there any further comments concerning adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Norman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we are going to get to do a bittersweet activity, which is to recognize the service to Iredell County and indeed citizens of both South Carolina and North Carolina of Mr. Steve Messick, who will be retiring from Iredell County, service to Iredell County at the end of the year. So I would ask Steve, if you and your family could come up.
You know, you never know, he's just a year older than I am. He's a true son of the soul. He grew up in Olin, out of Fort Hare. He graduated from Fort Hare High School in nineteen seventy-two, went on to attend the Mitchell College and then there to the UNCC during the seventieth sixth. And then he began working in, I think it was back then, Downey, I think it was the quarter gate up there, working at the library and then later on moved on to Davidson Library. And in nineteen eighty-five, he left, got his bachelor's degree in library science at USC, so at AICAC. And then they kept him down in South Carolina after graduating from USC, went to Florence, South Carolina, worked in the library system there. And in nineteen ninety-one, moved to Summerlin, South Carolina, and directed the Dorchester County Library. About that now, he reeled it back in to North Carolina. And in October of nineteen sixty-six, he was hired as the director of the Iredell County Library Project. So at that point, he was no longer a rolling stone and he managed to keep it in place. A lot of changes been public library. If you remember the original location across from Broad Street, that is church. And so the library facility that we have is in large measure a consequence of the vision that Steve had for what the library can do. And the friends of the library that worked very closely in terms of current public support, they built truly a world-class library or a town of this size or a campus. I'd say really anticipated requirements because, you know, I think a lot of people looked at this and this is a big hooker of a library. And, you know, back in the nineties and early two thousands, remember when you're looking for a place that, you know, found some places that had a lot of problems, underground streets and things like that. So he found a place to put it. He chose a place that had a bunch of libraries. But it was a good location. Any rate, the public library today, you know, you hear a lot of people will say, well, who's really focusing? Everything is electronic, everybody's just, you know, engaging in short-term social media contacts and really not getting into reading. And what you'll find is that libraries change with the customers. They have a new customer base, a new generation, and they're figuring out how do we connect with them and how do we make what we have available, which is knowledge accessible and attractive for new generations and access. So Steve's really been on the cutting edge of the thought library system, which isn't just a station, but has branches throughout the county. And how many employees?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight employees. And so as sort of the crowning achievement, that's where he gets to get off the merry-go-round, they, we discovered that there is a solvent fakers that penetrated to some extent the building. That's that's from old dry cleaning businesses and how people used to dispose of those solvents. So today, as a matter of fact, this evening, we take the action to address that. And I gotta tell you, the chips were down, basically, you know, we had to immediately notify everyone, call potential hazards, minimal hazard, but, you know, we don't want any of that. It's a work environment for our staff or for patrons. And so after identifying that, the staff came together and they all put their shoulders to the wheel. They moved a ton of books from the entire first floor up to the second floor and beyond. Moved the genealogical folks out of their room downtown. And in no time flat, and over, in just a weekend, they were completely up and running. The children's area had its function. It's been crowded, but it's been functioning. And they've never not been able to business. And now we're going to address that issue and the children's area will be reconstituted in a different location downstairs and all that full functionality will be restored and will be back to new. And so it's quite an achievement and I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens of Iredell County. And Steve, I thank you for being there and supporting Steve as he went down, brought home a lot of the concerns that he had and shared there. But appreciation for your service to Iredell County, Steve Messick, and appreciation for all your dedication to the first of Iredell County.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the board, too.
Well, first of all, a little biography there, I left out the most important part. That's when I was at the University of South Carolina. It was one of my met J.B. Yay. So that was.
I didn't have that answer.
But I did grow up near Olin and, you know, Harmony was like town and Statesville was the big city. But it was always a thrill for me when I got to come to Statesville, too, was to go to the library on West Broad Street, across from that church. So it was a great honor and credit was for me twenty-two years ago to be able to come back here and serve in the library that I grew up in. So that was a great honor. I, of course, want to thank the board, going back over the past twenty-two years, all the support you've shown for the library. We've gone through a lot of expansion and growth thanks to the support of the board and I really appreciate that and I appreciate that you're continuing to support us as you normally do not. I want to thank Beth for being such a great boss and all the county managers that I've worked with, Lon Smith and Joel Mashburn, all the very, very supportive of the library and really grateful to work with. I want to thank all the other county departments that have been so supportive over the years, especially human resources and finance department and, of course, facility services, who does a fantastic job all the time. And recognize the friends of the library who are supporting and supporting the library and helping us further our expansion. And most importantly, I want to thank the staff that I have the privilege to work with. I've, I've worked in public libraries for forty-two years and the colleagues that I have now are by far the finest group of people that I've ever worked with. And I am really, really going to miss being able to work with them. And I know the future is great because Julie Moore will be taking over as our new director from the public libraries, always to achieve even greater heights in future.
Good to see you, man.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for your many years of service. Thank you, thank you. Now, if you get tired of it, sit down back. We've got some work to do. We've got some work to do in the library. We've got some work to do there. He ain't done.
Okay.
At this time, we move on to item five. We have an appointment before the board, which is our annual presentation by Brian Duncan, who is the Executive Director of iCare Incorporated, his annual community services block grant anti-poverty plan. And Brian, I think, is in his second year as the chairman of the.
Third.
Third, oh, they roped you in, didn't they? Of the National Association for Directors. So congratulations on that.
Thank you so much. And thank you for allowing us to come before you again this year. The information was in your board packet and the application actually represents year two of a three-year anti-poverty plan. And the work that we'll be doing is essentially the same that we've done over the last year, in fact, the last several years. And the application was, was developed based on community forums that were held in Statesville, Mooresville and Harmony back in two thousand and seventeen. And so our focuses will be on areas that, barriers that include lack of education, unemployment and underemployment, lack of knowledge of resources and lack of transportation. We were successful in, you know, our approach in our past year. And so just to share some of our outcomes, and we try to focus on outcomes. So the outputs are the activities that we use to, you know, to operate the program. But we're really focused on outcomes, what actually changes in a person's life. And so in last year, we had nineteen of our families rose above the poverty guidelines and the average change in income was about sixty-three hundred dollars. We pride ourselves on being able to reduce their dependence on public assistance and so it reduced by thirty-one percent, those that we served. And so obviously, that has a lot to do with employment and so that becomes our focus. Employment doesn't solve everything, but it is a great start. It's a great start. So we had twenty-six that actually obtained employment. We had eight that obtained better employment. We had ten that gained employment with medical benefits. The average wage rate was ten dollars, twenty-six cents an hour. Thirty completed education and training programs, four secured standard housing, and we did provide emergency assistance to twenty-six individuals. And so we think we made a pretty good headway working with the families that we were so fortunate enough to serve. As I said, our focus is more so on outcomes. And so I'll do something, if you will indulge me this year, a little different. I'd like for you to allow us to, one of our customers to come up and talk a little bit about, you know, what his experience was on our program. So we have Patrick Clyburn with us tonight and Shelton Moore, who is our program director. He'll, he's with us as well. So Patrick, if you'll come up and just talk a little bit about what the program is.
How you doing? First of all, I want to say I'm nervous, but in life, you must help those to help you, you know? I'm not too good of a speaker, but I just want to come and change, tell how the program helped my life, you know? I went to them, I was unemployed, I had been laid off from my previous job and things weren't looking too good for me and mine, my family. I sat down with Shelton and his staff, did not him, just him, but his other staff, they all set a plan out for me. First of all, we was going to try to get me a degree or something, but we still working on that, but I just, I needed a job. And, you know, it was kind of rough for me then, you know? They came through, they guided me right through it. They, we sat down, did a plan and we executed it. I've been employed there now for a year. I've had a couple of raises and everything's going well for me. So I'd like to thank the whole staff of iCare just for sitting down and taking their time and really me and my family making a better world for us.
Thank you, Mr. Clyburn.
So, good evening. One of the things that Patrick failed to mention, I wish he would have, he's currently employed at Engineering Systems Components down in Troutman. I touch base with Jen Comer quite often and she continues to rave about his productivity. He never have to be concerned about his attendance, punctuality, ability to work in teams and stay on task. So I wish he would really praise himself because he's doing an outstanding job. You heard the numbers from Mr. Duncan. He talked about the average wage rate being at ten dollars and twenty-six cents an hour, which is still slightly below a living wage. So that's our goal going into the next, upcoming program years to try to communicate with local employers to get them to see the significance of families earning a living wage. Conversations I've had thus far, there seems to be some discussion at their tables. So, you know, just real pleased to know that we have some strong partnerships here in the county, have some employers that trust that we're going to send them some qualified candidates and we're just making progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Shel.
Thank you. So any questions for us, we'll certainly entertain.
Questions from the board? Let me just say, Mr. Clyburn, appreciate your being here to share the impact that iCare's had and the programs they've had. You know, it's, we get briefed on a lot of numbers and statistics and all that, but what makes all of those programs worthwhile is the benefit to individuals that they provide and the opportunities that they, the doors that they open to new opportunities to be able to maximize what your goals are, achieve your goals in life. So we appreciate the work, Brian, that you and your staff do. And look forward to hearing more good stories here from now and please don't hesitate to keep us apprised in the meantime.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your support. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a series of four public hearings before the board. The first is a public hearing for Project Pronto. We don't expect any action to come out of that. So at this time, Mr. Younger, I'll just plow forward with that.
Oh, donut first.
Oh, Project Donut, that's the one we're, okay. So Project Donut is the one that is not quite ready for primetime. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll now close, I'll ask if there's anyone here to be heard on Project Donut. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and announce that that matter is being tabled until such time as it is put back on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
For a subsequent public hearing. Okay. Now we move on to item seven point two, which is a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Pronto.
Yes, sir. And we do have with us accompanying tonight, along with this project presentation, is the Chief Operational Officer for Fiberworks Composites, which is Project Pronto, Joe Hoffman. He is here to answer any questions that you may also have at the end of the presentation and I believe wishes to address the board briefly. He did, we are delighted that he brought his father with him today, too, Joseph Hoffman Senior. So we're making a family event. And we have Russ Rodgerson, of course, with me, a President and CEO of Iredell County Economic Development. So Russ Rodgerson and myself, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to present before you today. Iredell County Economic Development is proud to announce Project Pronto's potential plans to expand and update their existing manufacturing facility, which is located in Mooresville, North Carolina. This time, we are announcing Project Pronto to be Fiberworks Composites. They have been operating in Mooresville for several years now and have completed a previous expansion during their time here, growing to over fifty employees. They design and manufacture high-performance, high-quality composite structures and serve the motorsports, the OEM, solar and aerospace industries. They're located off of Thunder Road, where they plan to add thirteen thousand square feet to their current facility. This new expansion will allow them to add new production machinery and engineering space for their growing workforce. This project anticipates to create twenty-six new full-time positions, generate four million one hundred fifty thousand dollars in new tax investment over the next five years. And according to the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we are requesting a tax grant back incentive be granted to Fiberworks Composites, also known as Project Pronto, for five years totaling up to seventy-five thousand dollars, which averages to approximately fifteen thousand dollars per year. Behalf the Iredell County Economic Development, I want to thank you for your consideration of this matter and happy to answer any questions you may have at this time for myself or for Mr. Hoffman.
Any questions or comments? You've been thoroughly briefed. Mr. Hoffman, we appreciate you being here. Do you have any remarks you'd like to make?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for the time of reviewing this and obviously, this is very important to me and the employees of Fiberworks. Like Chris said, we're over fifty people now and currently, we're invested in the motorsport industry and have some pretty lofty goals. But basically, we're an engineering tech company and with the way the automotive industry is outside of motorsports, with hybrid electric vehicles coming and aerospace, our investments will take us the next step and really set us apart from anyone in the composite industry on the East Coast. We're more like a European-type company, which is very rare, but with, where composites is in North America, is I think we're setting ourselves up for a bright future. So we're pretty unique, some really high-skill labor and some really bright young engineers. So I feel like I need to explain that a little bit to this group here because we got a good future ahead of us and pretty excited about it, so.
Well, we're excited that you're expanding and, you know, we're, we're primarily focused right now on trying to provide a pipeline of skilled workers so that you can continue to expand. And so we just encourage you to be involved in that process and help us, help all the employers in this county reach young people when they're in high school and give them a sense of the opportunities that exist in our own backyard to make very good incomes and be able to support their families.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing. I mean, we've created our own in-house training apprenticeship courses, also sending some of our people, like NTI, you know, training them locally, like for the machining side things. So, yeah, pretty unique opportunity for us, so.
Anything further?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to thank y'all once again for expanding in Iredell County and I hope we see you many more times up here when we're having this discussion.
You will.
Keep expanding, keep growing. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive up to seventy-five thousand over a five-year period based on the company's investment of four million one hundred and fifty thousand contingent upon a contract being executed within a hundred day, one hundred and eighty days.
All right, I will hold that for just a moment and open the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
And ask if there's anyone who is, like to be heard on this matter. I don't have anyone that's signed up, so I will close the public hearing. And the motion has been made by Commissioner McNeely.
Got excited. I'm so glad, I'm so glad y'all doing it, I got excited.
Fired up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We now move on to a public hearing to consider a request from Rob Downing to rezone approximately point four five one acres along Alexander Acres Road from single-family residential R2 to highway business HB. And Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up for us.
Good evening to the board. The first rezoning we have before us tonight, maybe the first time that the county's ever seen a property get released from Mooresville's jurisdiction back to the county. The property outlined in blue is the property in question, currently zoned under Mooresville's zoning district. Mooresville Town Board voted a couple of months ago to release this piece based on the applicant's request. The applicant owns a mini-storage facility that sits on the HB CUD piece. Back in two thousand and sixteen, he purchased this additional piece that was rezoned and as you can see, now he's purchased the additional piece, all to add to the current facility. Staff does support this request to rezone to HB. Property is adjacent to a commercial node designated in twenty thirty Horizon Plan, adjoins commercially zoned property and will help result with maintained watershed regulation Back in 2016, he purchased this additional piece that was rezoned, and as you can see, now he's purchased the additional piece, all to add to the current facility. Staff does support this request to rezone to HB. Property is adjacent to a commercial node designated in 2030 Horizon Plan, adjoins commercially zoned property, and will help result with maintained watershed regulation compliance. This is the land use plan showing the rural commercial node, an aerial of the property. At the planning board meeting, there was no opposition, and planning board did vote 9-0 in favor of this request. It's just an existing wooded track at this time. Some pictures of it. There is some steep terrain. The applicant at this time is not sure how the property will be used, but as long as they meet the setbacks, even though it's a small piece, it can be utilized. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? Okay. Have one individual. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Rob Downing, the applicant, you signed up to be heard. Welcome back.
Good evening, board. Appreciate you hearing the case tonight. Here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Downing? I don't think so. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Thank you, and have a Merry Christmas.
I would inquire as to anyone else that would like to be heard. Hearing and seeing none, close this public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve this zoning map amendment and the, to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adoption of our 2030 Horizon Plan and that the said approval is reasonable and is in the public's interest and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because the parcel is adjacent to rural commercial node and designated on the 2030 Plan. It adjoins commercially zoned property, and additional area will result in maintained watershed regulation compliance.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Come back again. And finally, the last public hearing we have, item 7.4, is a public hearing to consider a request for expansion of an existing non-conforming use by landowner Jeff Benfield and applicant Danny Lippard, Jr. of Benfield Sanitation Services at 282 Scots Creek Road. Mr. Todd?
Okay. This particular request is a little different than a rezoning. The existing business out there is what's considered a legal non-conforming business. It was there prior to countywide zoning in 1990. The code, however, does state that if someone wishes to replace a legal non-conforming building larger than what's out there, that this process is required. There are four findings or criteria that must be met, and those are: the enlargement will not cause substantial harm to adjoining property owners; enlargement will not result in traffic increases beyond the capacity of the road serving the area; enlargement will not result in emissions of smoke, fumes, noise, odor, or dust, which will be detrimental to the character of the district or to the health, safety, or general welfare of the community; and enlargement will maintain all minimum setbacks and buffer requirements of the use district in which said use would be permitted. Staff is in support of this request. Also, the planning board voted 9-0 to recommend in favor of the request, and there was no opposition at the planning board hearing. Properties outlined in the greenish color on the screen, that's just the 2030 Horizon Plan, it's on Scots Creek Road. This shows the, an aerial of the building. The building that you're familiar with that burnt a few months ago is up near Scots Creek Road. The business takes in everything you see there. Just another image of the property. The request tonight with the site plans that have been submitted, it actually does include these other buildings and the open storage back here, so it actually kind of brings the whole property into compliance with the zoning regulations. Again, just another site plan of the proposed building. It's actually moving farther away from the property line than the old existing building. Just a couple pictures, Scots Creek Road looking back toward 115, then looking west on Scots Creek Road. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? All right. I will open this public hearing, and I have two folks who have signed up, Danny Lippard and Jeff Benfield. So, gentlemen, would you like to?
Good evening, morning. Just like to say thank you for having us tonight and reviewing this for us. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? I think we're good. Anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.
Okay. I'd inquire if there is anyone else that would like to speak. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to proudly say that this is one of the examples of our planning zone and our staff and our board working with existing businesses in the county. This company has been a great asset to Iredell County for years and is continuing in that realm, and unfortunately, this company suffered a fire, and this is putting back a new facility that will better serve their business, and they've been a great neighbor to that neighborhood out there in Iredell County for years. But in lieu of that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the expansion of the non-conforming use and to advise that it meets the criteria of non-conforming uses, section 15.4 of Iredell County Land Development Code.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is going to be very prudent for them, and I'm just glad that we're not buried in garbage. We're going to get this done for the county and them, too.
And I'll add that it's glad to be able to put a name to a truck. Okay. Any further discussion, comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, we'll now move on to item 8, which is administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda. These are all items that we discussed at length at our pre-agenda meeting, which is held at the 5 o'clock hour, which is open to the public and mostly deals with technical issues. But if you would like to be there, we encourage you to be there. And so, Ms. Jones, if you would please summarize those items that have been selected for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from Partners Behavioral Health Management to allocate current law enforcement funds to be used at Impact Health of Iredell and the Crisis Recovery Center in the amount of $115,000 as the local match for a mental health assistance program. This is a new program. They received a five-year grant totaling about $1.5 million, and with that grant that is specifically for Iredell County, they will be creating a center for not just an IVC or involuntary commitment drop-off center, but also to partner with our local agencies, our faith-based communities, our veteran service office in those communities, as well as our opioid crisis partners, and working with our mental health providers to try to find a good avenue and follow-up program for those individuals that are suffering from mental health issues and substance use issues. So, this is going to be a great opportunity that will also partner with our law enforcement agencies, with the Sheriff's Office, Statesville PD, Troutman PD, Mooresville PD, and they will all be working together to try to get appropriate treatment and assistance, and not just appropriate treatment and assistance, but follow-up care for those individuals. Once they, if they go through the law enforcement process and serve their time in our jail, having an avenue for them when they get out to have follow-up and treatment and staying, having someone that checks up with them and stays with them to try to help them avoid those life choices that they've made in the past. So, we're really excited about this new opportunity. Again, it's a five-year grant and a great opportunity for Iredell County. The second item was a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 21 for the Bright Ideas Grant Funding in the amount of $16,176. There is a request from the Iredell County Rescue Squad for approval to purchase new equipment. This is in the amount of $14,684.15, and this will come from the Iredell Rescue Capital Reserve account. There was a request from the Tax Administration for approval of November refunds and releases. And then, the final item was a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on December the 4th, 2018.
Is there any further discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Chairman, make a motion.
I think we have a majority vote. Motion by Commissioner Norman to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have one item that was presented in detail, item 8.6, presented at our earlier pre-agenda, which we need to have a open vote. Mr. David Slevy is going to regale us on his presentation of the work to be done at the Iredell County Public Library for the Environmental Mitigation Project.
Thank you. At the October 16th meeting of this year, the Iredell County staff, along with representatives from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, presented an update of the Iredell County Main Library mitigation plan and budget. Their scope was to assess the environmental conditions of the library through testing and through evaluation of the site and the building. The project team presented the steps to mitigate the environmental issue and reopen the first floor of the library building. At that meeting, the board asked staff to go back and bring back a budget that was based on actual bids for the work to be done in the library building. The, in your packet, what was given to you is the budget that was a result of those bidding, of the bidding process. There were several areas of that budget that I'd like to go over quickly. The first part was just preparing the public area for the coating or the mitigation work, which is really a above-the-concrete slab and wall vapor barrier system. So, we had two bidders on that part. Then, the second part is actually the vapor barrier itself, which is a specialized product, and the, our contracts manager and the staff is asking for a sole, for a sole source purchase of that because this is a product that was requested and recommended by the state of North Carolina to take care of this issue. We included third-party testing, since the county has never done any type of testing or supervision of this type of application. We included that. Under the state contract, our project included floor covering, and then, the library staff, along with the facility service staff, asked for some furniture, we call it FFE, furniture, fixture and equipment, and actually, a good piece of that is the furniture or the, some of the, of the cabinetry that was taken out so that we could actually get to the concrete, and it had to be removed and it'll have to be rebuilt, along with some older pieces of furniture. But the, but most of it is rebuilding some of the old cabinetry that had to be taken out, that was in the original 2003, 2004 building. The task number seven is to move the children's activity area, and presently, or prior to this project, the children's activity area was in a corner of the library that had probably the highest level, even though it was still safe, it was the highest level of the soil vapors coming through. And it's just because that area is in the proximity of where one of the dry cleaners was. So, we were asked to expand the scope and move the children's activity area to a area which is adjacent to, just about adjacent to, the rear parking lot. There was no vapors coming through at that point. So, we have added that as an alternate bid for the, for our contractor that we've bid out, and that alternate bid provides moving that area, moving a small kitchenette, moving some walls, some more demolition that's needed, and then putting everything back hole, and then putting the children's activity area in an area that is farthest away from where we had our issue. With that, we were also, as a precautionary measure, expanding the vapor barrier application. So, and which totaled, which totaled 13,025 feet of vapor barrier application material. And then, finally, we added a contingency at the end, just to cover some, a few things that we may have missed. So, the entire project came up to $309,491. Funds are in the CIP, earmarked in the CIP for this, if the board chooses to go through with it. I will say that we had two bidders for the construction and the moving of the children's activity area, and we had three bidders for the application of the vapor barrier product. Up until this point, we are just, we have just brought the bids back to the board. If they choose to move forward, then our contract manager department will qualify the bids and award from there, and the same with the sole source purchase of the vapor barrier material. I think I covered most of it. Manager Jones, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask.
Any questions for Mr. Slevy? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, when this first come about, I thought this was an exorbitant amount of money to do the job that we were talking about, but once going and looking at the project, being in the building, and seeing what we done, and what we got to do to get the building back in shape to go again, I think this is a necessity, not a want or a need, but a necessity, to make this building functional again, and I think by us moving the children's section to the place where we've never, I repeat, never, got any reading of any kind, that everybody should feel comfortable about going in that library or sending their children to that library. And so, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward on this and spend this money. The actual, go with option number two. I think at this time, our facility services are pretty stretched, so I think to get this expedited and move forward, we need to go with option two, which is to have outside sources help us with the construction.
Any discussion on Commissioner McNeely's motion? I'd just like to say that the purpose of this is to provide complete assurance to the patrons and the staff of the library that it is a safe and welcoming place to be and has never not been open for business, has never not been unsafe. We want to remove any doubt and any impressions that anybody may have. So, any further comments? Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Another project on your plate, Mr. Slevy.
For that.
Thank you. We'll now move to item, we don't have any announcements of any vacancies on boards or commissions, but we've got plenty of appointments to boards and commissions this evening in item 10, so I would ask Ms. Jones to please run down the roster of appointments, and we'll entertain a motion, an omnibus motion, if you will, for all concerned.
Absolutely. The first is the Charlotte Regional Partnership. We have one reappointment of Larry Schaefer. The Board of Health has two appointments. One is Robert Bundy, Jr., and the other is Suzanne Hinson Corwin, and both of them have volunteered to serve for the first time. The members that were rolling off that board reached their term limits, and both of these, these terms are recommended by that outgoing member to fill, and some of them are very specific. I think one is a physician appointment as well. The next one is the Recreation Advisory Board, and that is two reappointments, Rob Jackson and Daryl Tilly. The next is Transportation Advisory Board, and that is one reappointment of Sarah Lewis. And then, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is three appointments. Two are standing members. Two are standing members, Tim Johnson and Bill Brader. And the other is John Madison, which is a current alternate on the Board of Adjustment.
Any discussion? Is there a motion to move forward on these appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve all the said names.
A motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those aye's, that motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come before the commission? Hearing none. Move on to item 12. This is a public comment period. I do not see that anyone has signed up, and I would inquire of anyone who's left, if you want to be heard. David, I've never seen you at a loss for words. Not hearing anyone. We will move on to any new business? No new business. The county managers report.
Okay. Just a few things. One, we have a new addition to our team that's in the back of the room, and I'd like to introduce Joseph Pierce. He started on, actually, was supposed to start on Monday, the 10th, and it was a snow day. So, but he has joined our team, and he is a great addition to our administrative team. So, I'm very happy to have him on board, and he has hit the ground running. So, I think everybody has had the opportunity to meet him. But just wanted to welcome you officially, Joe. Also, to let everyone know that county offices will be closed on December the 24th through the 26th for the Christmas holiday. And our annual employee Christmas luncheon had to be rescheduled due to inclement weather. So, as of today, we have selected a new date for that luncheon. It will no longer be a Christmas luncheon, but it will be, we'll celebrate winter. So, it will be January the 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Statesville Civic Center. Amy will be working to get invitations out. Like I said, we just finally got that date solidified today, so she will be working and have everything out to, have all the invitations out by the end of the week. And the final item that we alluded to earlier is just to congratulate Julie Moore on her selection as our new library director. So, we're, she is our assistant director currently, and she will be taking over upon Steve's retirement, and I think she will be, do a greater job for us.
I only have one question, having to reschedule and get the caterers lined up again and the space lined up again. But most importantly, were you able to line up our longstanding entertainment with David Sleavy and Pickers and Grinders?
And the Bill Street Band.
Okay. Good.
Nodding her head yes.
All right. We will have a successful luncheon.
No Christmas music.
No Christmas music.
All right. At this time, we will move into a closed session for a matter of property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A5, as well as potentially a continuation of discussion on attorney-client pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A3.
The only loyal staff remains.
Yes.
For the...
My sir, all right.
For the army of one.
Oh, that hurts.
Yeah.
Big guy.
I got my bag back.
Yeah, leave that for me.
We'll start carrying it again.
No, no, no.
See, the thing is, his hands on his seat.
We will now resume our open session.